So, we'll just get rolling. Well, welcome, everyone. Thanks so much for coming on out for our 2016 candidate forum for our school board election this upcoming April. So, my name is Ron Russ and I am the superintendent here at Merton Community School District. This is my fifth year. I happen to have children, I'm a community member, so a parent community member, as well as employee in the district. So, welcome, everyone. So, hey, this evening, we have Jennifer Hughes and Katie Twelman's here as, and first of all, I'd like to thank them again for their aspirations, and Jenny, as the incumbent, thank you, and Katie for her aspirations for becoming a member of the board. But they are here this evening to talk about basically some big-picture questions for the district, but as well as give you guys an opportunity to ask questions if you've got a question. All we would ask is that both candidates get a chance to answer the question, and so it's kind of addressed to both candidates, as well as it becomes a question around kind of what the board responsibility is. And Mrs. Neurath is here too as well, so she is here on behalf of the PTO, and we also have Rob Rosenberg, our moderator here from the PTO as well. So, I'd like to welcome you. Our format is not going to be as exciting as you might see something on TV here, like either last night or this upcoming Thursday. We would ask both of you, Jenny and Katie, to avoid personal attacks, insults, things like that, but no, this is really meant for our community to get a chance to know a little bit about each candidate and what they feel as the big-picture questions about the school district of Merton. So, at this time, I'm going to turn over to Rob Rosenberg, who has agreed to be our moderator. So, Rob?
Thanks, Rob. So, what we're going to do is we're going to, there's no gotcha questions here. All the questions are going to be asked of both of you. There's no specific questions that you're going to ask each other. It's just going to be, I'll ask the question, I'll let you know who's going to go first, who's going to go second. We're going to alternate from one question to the other who goes first, and then that will be preceded by opening statements, and then after the questions that I'm going to ask, we're going to have some audience questions, and then once we're done with those, we'll have an opportunity for a two-minute closing statement as well. With the questions, you'll have, the questions that I'm going to ask initially, you'll have two minutes. The answer, Ron, will give you what kind it's going to, you're up against the time clock there. And then for the audience questions, you'll have one minute each, and then for the closing statements, opening statements, you'll have two minutes. So, first, we'll have opening statements from Jenny.
Okay. I kind of wrote this down, so I don't forget anything, but my name's Jennifer Hughes. I'll start by telling you a little about myself. I'm from Appleton originally. Went to college at Madison, and that's where I met my husband after we graduated. We moved to Milwaukee. He went to work for his family's business, and I went to UW and got my master's in accounting. We have four kids. In 2005, we built a home in Mark River Crossing. My husband went to St. Charles and Arrowhead, so we thought this would be a good place to raise our family. So, my oldest son Brett started 5K at Merton in 2005, and now he's a sophomore at Arrowhead, so time flies. I also have a son in eighth grade, a son in sixth grade, and a daughter in fourth grade. All three of my younger kids are at Merton, and we love the school, and we feel certain pride when we tell our people where we go to school. So, a lot of things have changed since we moved to the district. When my son started 11 years ago, we had a different intermediate principal, we had a different superintendent. My two older boys looped their fifth and sixth grade year. All three of my boys moved over to the intermediate school at fourth grade, so things have changed. My interest in the school board began shortly after we moved into the district. Our subdivision went through a year of school board meetings trying to solidify busing, and so attending all those meetings as a member of the community, I kind of piqued my interest in being part of the board. So, I decided to run because I felt I had a lot to offer. I have three kids, or had three kids at school at the time. My daughter was in four, or set to start 4K, and I also have a strong financial and business background. The first year on the board was quite tumultuous. I can't even speak tumultuous. There were many people within our district upset about the direction the curriculum was going, particularly at the upper grades. In the middle of our many school board meetings, to try and solve these problems, our superintendent decided to retire, and the governor passed the Act 10. So, needless to say, I learned a lot in my first year. Things have settled down since then. We've hired a new superintendent. We've talked to different schools about consolidation. We've worked hard to get the district in a good financial spot. So, these are just a few things I've been a part of, serving on the Merton School Board for the past six years, and I look forward to continuing to serve the community.
Thank you. All right, Katie.
Hi, my name is Katie Twelman's. My husband and I have been married for 12 years. This April, we moved to the community about seven years ago. We have three children. Our oldest is Jack. He's eight and in second grade. Our middle son Ben is seven in first grade, and our youngest is Megan, and she's in 4K. I have a degree in psychology and a degree in history. I taught both short and long-term substitute teaching, K through eight, and then before moving to Wisconsin, had a successful sales career at a Fortune 500 company. After moving to Wisconsin, stayed home and have been raising our children since the kids have started school. I'm in the school all the time volunteering, either in classrooms or in some capacity in the library. I also volunteer coaching sports, and the older the kids get, the more involved they get, the more we, my husband and I, get involved as parents, the more I want to be involved. And I feel the best way for me to continue that involvement and grow that involvement is by running for a school board. So, that's my opinion.
Great. So, we're going to open up the question portion. We'll start off with Katie. And what did we say, two minutes? Two, okay, so you'll have two minutes to answer. "In your view, what are some of the major issues presently facing the district? With that, what are your positions on those issues, and/or what would you recommend the district do differently, or how they should confront those issues?"
Some, well, one of the major issues I see facing the district is that we have a graduating eighth-grade class with 116 students in it, and a 4K class with 55 students in it, and projections for next year's 14th class look very similar to this year's. Our dollars come per pupil, so with declining enrollment, how are we going to continue to provide quality education and do what we have? Because with the enrollment declining, it's going to also be a decline in budget. That, I think, is a huge issue, and I think if we can keep our focus on academic achievement and supporting our staff and administration to keep the focus on academic achievement, and the board being that support system and that not mic, but we're holding that together with the students coming first, I am hopeful that we can come to, or at least achieve a direction where our declining enrollment isn't going to be imminently, any imminent I guess I would, I realize that right now, we're at a projection of a deficit of $250,000 for next school year, so I recognize that those things need to be addressed, but if we keep the children and their education and that standard high, I think everything else will fall in place.
Jenny.
Well, I agree with a lot of what Katie said. She, I agree, we do have declining enrollment, which is a problem because of results of less stated. One issue I think that we continually face is our ongoing desire to improve student achievement. Part of that struggle is that each student is unique and learns differently, so we really need to continue to support our teachers, to find new ways to engage the kids and keep them challenged while meeting the needs of each individual student. And part of that is a struggle because we do have decreased aid, we are in a deficit budget, but I think right now, we are very financially sound, so if we can continue to look for new ways to engage the kids, look for new ways to save money, maybe bring in, we have a new STEM program, talk to different businesses and see if they would, the engineering companies, things like that, will help contribute to our STEM program, keep things like that. Those are, those are types of programs that can keep the kids engaged. So, I think that is a challenge, though, and it will continue to be.
Okay. Okay. Question number two. This one's for you to start with. "What is your personal vision for the school district, i.e., where do you see yourself having the greatest impact, and what experiences do you feel have prepared you to make that impact?"
Well, I guess my vision for the school kind of goes back to the first point. I really just want the school district to stand out in the Lake Country, and I want our kids to be high achievers. I want to be able to send our eighth graders onto Arrowhead and have them just do awesome. And as being on the school board, I think that, I'm a part of the finance committee right now, and I do a financial background, and so I can, you know, make suggestions or help, you know, ask the right questions on where we're spending our money, and maybe we could find a different way to use our resources or put our resources in a different spot. So, I think, I think that's it.
Yeah. Katie?
My personal vision is, is really focused on a standard of academic excellence, and I think we need to be focused in working towards that and working on policies that improve student achievement, and recognizing that each child learns individually, and working on customizing that education. And I think the best way to do that, and the way I would support that as a school board member, is really taking a collaborative approach to support our staff and our teachers' administration as much as possible to figure out what goals we need to set to achieve, to achieve this standard of academic excellence, and what can we do as a board, as a community, as parents, to stay involved and support them in that process. And I think if we can keep our children achieving and going in a positive direction, the end result is going to be positive for our community, our families, whether you have children in the school or not.
Great. Okay. Next question, Katie will start with you. "While it's always easy to point out what someone or something is doing wrong, what in your view are some of the things you think that the district is doing right, and why do you hold that view?"
I think, I love that that's a positive question. First, I know there's a couple of people in here that know me, but for those of you that don't, I'm a very positive and optimistic person, so I appreciate the question. I think this school district is amazing and does a ton of positive things. When we moved here, our realtor, we asked about school districts. We were coming from Indiana, and our realtor had said, "Well, Swallow's the best school." I'm like, "Well, this, our house isn't, is it in that district?" And he's like, "Well, I'm not sure, but I guess you'll be okay, because any Arrowhead or school would be good." And I was like, "Well," it sounded a little strange, because now, after being here and being part of this community for seven years and having children in the school and will be in the school for years and years to come, I don't understand why that realtor didn't put Merton and Swallow on the same level, because I'm grateful to be here. And so, the things that we do outstanding, our teachers are incredible. They're so committed and have so much heart. Mr. Buddhist, amazing. So, having those just high-integrity people like that that are committed to education and to our children, I think, is what makes our school so successful, but I want to be here and being part of the process to continue that success.
Good.
Can you repeat the whole question, so I'll make sure I understand it?
"While it's always easy to point out what someone or something is doing wrong, what in your view are some of the things you think the district is doing right, and why do you hold that view?"
I do agree with Katie, again, that we do have outstanding teachers, and both at the primary and intermediate and outstanding administration, and I can take more of a school board hat from that, I think that we are doing things right, not only in the classroom, but behind the scenes, so we can provide that support to our teachers. For example, we, I'll go back to the financials because that's my strongest suit, but we set aside money each, each year to, for future projects, so we don't have to go back to a referendum. We did a facility study, so we can basically have a checklist of things each year that we want to take care of around the school, so we can maintain the walls that our kids are learning in. We can maintain the infrastructure. So, I think those are outstanding things, and they're things that people don't always see, but that, doing, in doing those things, I think we're able to then provide outstanding, outstanding teachers and curriculum and resources, whether it's from the STEM program or other types of computers, or iPads for the younger kids, or even for our special ed program, we can provide some outstanding resources for them to, to achieve as much as possible.
Okay, great. All right, Jenny, this question's going to start with you. "With schools across the state being hit with decreased state aid and budgets being tightened and scrutinized, name both a program you would protect and another one that you would consider cutting in order to meet budgetary goals for the district."
I think the first thing I would protect would be smaller class sizes. Since my kids started here, they were even smaller than they are now, but we have done, worked really hard to keep the class sizes small. Even at the seventh and eighth grade level, where they climbed a little bit, we work hard here to make sure that the core classes maintain a small class size. I just think that's very important. The teachers are only one person, and if you have more than 20, 23 kids in a classroom, it's hard to really focus and give each student that individualized learning. What would I cut? I don't know. I hate, I hate the idea of cutting anything, so I think every program we have here is so important, and honestly, I can't think of anything that I would want to cut. It would be a really hard, hard decision that I hope that we never have to make.
Good. Katie?
I couldn't agree more. I think it's, it's vital to keep our class sizes low. That's for the, to really optimize the individualized learning, the teacher has to be in the classroom, and there's, the class size is small enough that they can get to know each child individually, so they can customize that education, what that learning looks like. And as far as cutting anything, also agree. So, just without more information, probably are just even discussing really cutting anything.
Okay, I'm going to add on to that question real quick, and I'll start off with Katie and come back to Jenny. If you were in a situation or a position where you had to cut a program in order to meet the margin, would you be, without naming a specific program, would you be able to objectively look at all of the programs that the school offers in order to figure out what needed to be cut in order to meet the margin goals?
100%.
Yep.
Definitely, definitely.
Okay. So, Ron, we're a little bit ahead. I'm going to ask some of the other questions before we go to audience. Okay, I'm going to start off, I think Katie went last with this last question, so I'm going to start off on this one. Mine is my little nicer question in there. "As a school board member, how do you balance the needs of the community versus the needs of the school?"
And, Michael? Sorry. Katie, okay. How do I balance the needs of the school versus the needs of the community?
Yes.
I, I wouldn't separate the two. I think that's a symbiotic relationship. I don't think you can have a successful school without a successful community, and I don't think you can truly have a successful community without a successful school. I think everybody reaps the benefits of both those, operating as efficiently and as high level as they've done.
I agree with that. We have to try and keep in mind that, I think it's something like 80% of our voters in our district don't have children in our school, but they still have, it's still very important to every taxpayer, every homeowner, to have a high-achieving school. And I also think that the school can bring a community together, whether you have kids in the school or not, by things like the Mike Buddhist gym, and maybe we'll be back someday there, you know, who knows what can happen, as long as we have a successful school, though, and people are supportive, and I think having a supportive community will also help create a more successful school.
Okay. So, Jenny, this next one will start with you. "What is your view on the amount of assessments our students undertake in a year? Do you think it's good? Do you think it's bad? Do you think it's healthy? Do you think it's not healthy?"
I know this is kind of a mixed, I mean, people have mixed reviews on all the assessments. I do think that assessments are good because how do we know how our kids are doing? You know, I don't know if it's necessarily good to compare one kid to another, but you're comparing, by doing the assessments three times a year, you're comparing your kid to your kid. Did they improve? Are they getting worse? You know, how's, how are they looking? I do like that we started doing some of the assessments before school starts, because that does provide more classroom time for real teaching rather than just taking tests. Do I think they're too many? I don't know. I don't know how we, how we would achieve what we're achieving without them. You know, we're taking three, three FUT tests and three other tests, I'm blanking on the name of that, but three other ones throughout the year, and I think going, moving to the trimesters has helped with that, too, and making it more, just kind of fit into the school year a little bit better.
Katie?
I wouldn't say, I absolutely see why assessments are necessary to see how the student is doing. It's necessary not only to see how the student's doing, how they're progressing, but to have some kind of data for the school board to look at, the community to look at. I wonder, a step further, so when we're being rated for being an exceptional school or exceeding, or significantly exceeding, how is that affecting us, and what are we doing to put the kids in a position to be successful assessment takers or successful test takers? What does that look like? As opposed to, I know personally, the first time that our kid sat down and took a math test, it was his first computer-assessed test. I don't know what the regulations or rules are around that, but without any learning or instruction, it wasn't an accurate representation of what he knew. So, then it made me wonder, okay, if he's experiencing this, how is this looking for other students in other types of tests, be it in a different discipline or a different curriculum? So, are we doing enough to prepare kids to be good test takers? Because we can insulate them, but then they're going to go over to Arrowhead, and you're going to have to show what you know and do it well. So...
Great. So, I have one more question before we go to the audience questions. And we'll start with Katie. "What are the opportunities that you see the district having in the upcoming years, and how will these opportunities assist the future needs of the district?"
I see the opportunities we have, as long as we keep in mind that we are striving for academic achievement and excellence, that the possibilities for the community to strengthen, will grow and will strengthen, because our school, our scores, our reviews continue to grow, then if we're going to become a more desirable location to want to live, we're going to be able to retain the people and students that are here. Another opportunity for growth coming from the personal experience we had with realtors, I wonder how, as a school or community, do we market ourselves? So, we have all these new homes being built and developed. Do we have an opportunity to reach out to developers, realtors, and say, "Hey, come take a tour of our school. Come stop into a classroom. Till next time, you're showing prospective buyers, different communities in the area, you can, you know, with details, speak to what Merton offers." I think that would be an opportunity.
Can you repeat the whole question?
Sure. I'll try. I had to move some words to make sense of it. "What opportunities do you see the district having in the upcoming years, and how will these opportunities assist the future needs of the district?"
I agree with a lot of what Katie said. We do have a lot of new subdivisions being built, and I do think we have an opportunity, we're in declining moments, so that is an opportunity to try and capitalize on some new students. I know some of the subdivisions are a little bit higher-end than some of ours that we have right now, and there's concern that maybe those students could go to a private school, so maybe we can do some marketing, show these new families what Merton has to offer. And I think that would help us from a budget standpoint. It would obviously, we want more kids in the door, and we want to show these families and these kids what we can do, and be able to send all these kids off to Arrowhead and just have them do great things in high school, great things in life, and I just, I think, what are the opportunities we have in the future? I don't know. I think, I think things that we are doing, if we can continue to build on some of the programs that we started here, everything from STEM to the National Junior Honor Society, that's a great opportunity for kids to just showcase some of their, their personal skills that may be outside of the classroom and to grow as, as people. You know, I think we started a forensics club, and they're talking, they're talking about a robotics club, just those, those types of opportunities, I think we need to start taking advantage of. Now that we, I feel like we're kind of back on track, and that can really showcase part in as well, school plays, I just, all those kind of outside the walls of the classroom opportunities.
Okay, so we're going to switch over to audience questions now, and we're switching over to one-minute peer responses, and I'm going to try to read these as we go, see if some of them we've already, maybe already covered some of these topics, so I may skip a couple of these. So, Jenny, I'm going to start with you. "As a school board member, how would you ensure the board stays connected with day-to-day challenges at each school? How will you make sure teachers' voices are heard?"
Well, I think that as a school board member, just the attempt to, to make sure that teachers know that they can come to us at any time, especially if they have any issues, if they have questions, if there's some, an idea that they want brought up. And, I'm sorry, can you repeat the rest of the question?
Sure, sure. You want just the second half of it?
No.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
"As a school board member, how would you ensure the board stays connected with day-to-day challenges at each school? How will you make sure teachers' voices are heard?"
I'm sorry, that was the beginning part that I forgot what you said. The, the day-to-day challenges, as a school board member, I don't feel that unless it's a big challenge, a big issue, a big problem, that isn't my job. That's the administration's job. I'm not here to micromanage. If it is something that could end up coming to the school board, any kind of an issue, then I want to know about it. Otherwise, day-to-day, that's why we hire great people to lead the school.
Okay. Katie?
I plan to make myself available to the teachers by being present in both the primary and middle school, and that presence would be by no means to step on anybody's toes or to micromanage anything, but I want the teachers to know that I care what they're doing, I care about their efforts, and if they have any concerns, I'm happy to listen, and I'm happy to go to them, because I want them to be focused on their job in the classroom and not worried about seeking out the board. So, that's how I think that could be a supportive and collaborative approach.
Okay. Next question, start with Katie. "While I appreciate the board's commitment to financial conservatism, when Act 10 passed, we eliminated the salary ladder for teachers per n salary, salary that reflects tenure and per n. Would you consider going to the community for approval of a minor tax increase to maintain services and compensate our teachers, especially our young enthusiastic ones?"
I'm confused by the question, because it's suggesting that tenure does, is corresponding with pay, but then also questioning what I would do for a young enthusiastic teacher, which would be, Katie, the same alone with somebody based on...
I think that the basis of the question is, would you consider going and proposing a tax increase to help pay for additional services for the school? I think that's the gist of the question. I think that's the gist of the question.
For salaries.
For salaries. You're, I'll go right around to see a record category over base wage. That's a much better way of putting it.
I would be very prepared as a board member to hear and gather as much information and data around that issue, what it meant, where those monies were going, why they were necessary, how they were being assessed, how it was being allocated throughout the teachers, but I'm not comfortable just saying yes. I think there are far too many other things that need to be looked at.
Okay. Jenny?
I agree. I'm not comfortable saying yes or no with that question, but, and I do think that that is something that, as a school board member, I guess you need to consider or consider why? Why would we want or need to do that? And if there is a need, then look at, is there other ways or other places we can cut our budget before going to a referendum to increase base wage or, you know, even if it was as simple as raising taxes just to pay the teachers, which is important, but I don't know if, again, that goes back to a question we had before, how do we serve the community and the school? And is that serving the community by raising their taxes when maybe we can find another way to, to cut, cut things in order to make sure our teachers are fairly compensated?
Okay, next question. I think we're going to do maybe a couple more of these. I'll start with Jenny. What experiences or skills do you have that will help you or continue to help you in college or whatnot on the school board?
Well, I have been in the district for 11 years now. So like, like I mentioned before, I've seen so many changes and, you know, I've, I've had kids now in most, like first and fourth grade, four times. And a lot has changed from my oldest to my youngest. And some of it's good, some of it's not good, some of it continues to improve, most of it is good, most of the changes. But I think those experiences help on the school board because it gives you perspective. I also know, I know a lot of, I, I didn't grow up in the Arrowhead district and I think that makes a huge difference because I know what the schools are like outside of this area. And I grew up in a much different school district. And so I think that helps give perspective on kind of some of the topics that we, that are brought up here.
I guess with my oldest only being in the second grade, I don't have a ton of experiences in the school. But what I lack in experience in the school system, I definitely make up for in energy and dedication and devotion to my children, the children of this community and the entire community of Merton. So I'm confident, recognizing that I, I know what I don't know, but I'm absolutely willing to learn and won't ever stop.
Okay, great. And Katie, I'll throw this one to you first. This is kind of a fun question. What changes would you like to see in our school district?
And by fun?
Because you can say whatever you want. It's not wrong.
What changes?
Or how about we add on to this question? What changes would you like to see or what are some of your favorite programs that the school offers currently?
Okay, I'll go to changes. Because I, I love everything that the, that the school offers and I don't want to be vague or generic about that. And I'm starting to learn a lot more about junior achievement. But when I was, when my husband and I were growing up, we both went to the same school. We had a day called High Interest Day, which I'm wondering if this is similar to junior achievement. So parents in the community and other community members were welcome to come into the school and for the day, teach what they did and share with the students, what does it look like to be an engineer? My father was a carpenter, so he came in every day and he would get like six different classes throughout the day. You would sign up for different ones and he'd build a birdhouse with them. So that I thought was fantastic. This is different exposure to different disciplines and different jobs. And then it was also a way that people that were in the community, even if they didn't have kids in the school, they had the opportunity to come in and interact with the students and see, see their money at work. So that would be what I would change or add or suggest.
Jenny?
I agree. I don't, I think it's a great tool. There isn't anything to change. I, I'm so proud that my kids go to school here. If anything, it's, it's something's more, you know, more programs, more opportunities and not necessarily within the eight hour school day, but you know, I'd love to see a school play. I'd love to see, I, I love that some of our, like our fine arts programs are kind of evolving, like art is, is not just pencil and paper and to be art anymore. You know, it's, it's becoming 3D photography, ceramics and it just, that, I just love that everything is just continues to evolve. So I don't know if I would necessarily change anything, just continually look for new ways to keep the kids engaged and excited about school, even if it's excited about a program that's at four o'clock at, you know, after the school day.
Okay. And this is going to be the last question before we do the closings. And Jenny, we'll start with you. There are many ways to get involved in the school by the school board.
Well, as I mentioned before, I, I was, I had gone to a bunch of school board meetings and it seemed interesting to me. I, I'm still involved with my kids in their classroom. I'm still a room mom, helpless, I just helped with the book fair last week. Things here and there, whatever, you know, comes up, whatever is needed, but I like, I, I feel like I have some, a skill set that can help with some of the other aspects of school board and not everybody's interested in it. And so, and I am. So I guess that's, that's why.
Okay. Katie?
By also interest and involvement and the more the kids get involved and that we're involved in the community and at this school, the more I want to be involved. And I, I think this is, this is a place that I also think the, the skillset I bring would be best utilized and I'm just, I'm really passionate about it. And that's, that's the, the why behind it for me. Passion about this community, our school and our kids.
Great. Okay, so the next thing we're going to do is we're going to do the closing statements. And since we started off with Jenny first, this time we'll start off with Katie and then Jenny. We have two minutes.
Thank you first, everybody, for coming. Fantastic. Also speaks to how great this community is. To close, what, if elected, this is where I see my function on the school board and how I see it is being the conduit or the listener. I wanted to have this supportive collaborative role with both the community, staff administration, students, families to kind of, so we're all working together to defining our same goal and joining together. And I think if we all do it together, then that's how we can best serve our children and our community. Thank you.
And Jenny?
Thank you for coming. I, I would really like to continue being on the school board. I feel, it's been six years and I still have three more kids in school. There's still more work to be done. And I just, I feel like I'm still, there's still more work to be done. I finally have a good handle on how the finances work, how, how the board works, how, you know, we talked, we went and talked about consolidation. You know, there's so many issues out there and it's, not that you can't just pick it up because I had to, I stepped right in and everybody does when they're new on the school board, but I feel like I have a good handle on that and would love to continue to work more to improve our schools and that's it.
I made it back to running. All right. Well, first of all, thanks everybody for coming. Again, thank you Katie, thank you Jenny. Big round of applause. Again, I do believe our election is April 4th. 5th, April 5th, Tuesday, April 5th. So thanks everybody for coming and, and if you wanted to, I'll hang around and if we wanted to kind of talk, it's not often that we get a whole group of people from the community to talk about some things that might be of interest to you and, or ask a couple of questions about the district. So thanks again for coming, but again, best of luck Jenny, best of luck Katie. Thank you for your, your service. Thank you.